Guys, good? All right, it's Monday, November 20th, and just after 7:00, and I'll call the meeting to order for the State and City Council. Will you please join me in a flag salute?
... To the flag of the United States of America, as we are called, with which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a quick announcement that Councilor Gilio has been excused for this evening, and so we'll start with announcements. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? No? That goes with appointments. Resolution number 1077, appointment of Peter Bellis to the Planning Commission and Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board. Council? Counselor Sims?
I just had one question while I was looking through for the appointments. Richard Lewis is on another board. Is there any rules against being on multiple boards?
Not that I'm aware of, and I think the only rule for Mr. Lewis is how thin he can spread himself.
Yes, exactly. I don't have an issue. I just want to make sure there was no rules that...
No. Nope, not that I'm aware of. It has followed the process for submissions. I think the council liaisons have received both those, so council liaison for Parks is Mr. Sims, or, sorry, Mr. McDonald, Councilor McDonald. And who's it for Planning Commission?
I don't know.
There isn't one. Okay. All right, so what would you counselors like to do for these two resolutions? These are two appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution 1077 to a point. Richard Bellis to the Planning Commission and Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to proceed with the Resolution 1077, the appointment of Peter Bellis to the Planning Commission and Richard Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, four to zero with one Counselor Gilio absent. Is this to presentations? Anything tonight?
We have public comment and consent agenda.
Hmm, oh, sorry. How did I miss that? All right, so a public comment tonight, there have two folks, one's in the audience and one's online, so we'll start with Mary Scott, who happens to be in the audience.
I, again, am here about the tower and the public use of our property, or your right-of-way anyway, there on Wilco Road for the homeless. And we're concerned, I did talk to the people that take care of the cell tower down there, American Tower is their company, and they're pretty concerned about this whole thing, and they were going to contact you and talk to you about it as well, just as a warning, they're going to talk to you. Also, we're concerned about how these people are going to stay dry. It's going to be winter, it is winter, it's cold. What happens if they decide that they want to stay in those buses? How are you going to keep them out of there? All they have to do is just go around the corner, jump the fence, and they can be nice and warm in those buses. That's just kind of a concern that possibly could happen. And how is the fencing coming along? That she might bring that up later, I'm not sure, but we'd like to know when we should start getting really concerned. And also, how long will this be going on? Is this like until we don't have any more homeless? Or are they going to stay for a long time if they like this business of coming and staying at night and leaving in the morning, packing up all that stuff and carrying it around?
Okay.
And that's it. Those are the four concerns of the family right now, mainly the fencing is the big one.
Gotcha. Thanks, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
And just to confirm, you live at 1832 Kent Avenue?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Melissa is an online public comment person there? No? So we will skip that then. If there's any other public comment, that people have something to say? Okay, don't hear any? We'll move to the consent agenda. What would the City Council like to do for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ort.
I want to move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Now we go to presentations. Gilio?
We do not have any presentations this evening.
Now, at a public hearing, we don't have one, correct?
That's correct.
So that brings us to item number nine, general business, Resolution number 1078, authorizing an agreement with the San Diego Water Control District for water delivery. Gilio?
Yes, this is, so counsel, just as a reminder, and this is more for the public than for you, because you know this, you've had a couple of executive sessions discussing the water delivery contract, and this is reflection of the direction that was received, as well as what this San Diego Water Control District Board agreed to. This is a one-year contract, and we will continue negotiating over the next several months for a longer-term contract. But what is before you is generally what was discussed through negotiations, and we recommend approval of the resolution authorizing signature and agreement to the contract.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for a public comment on Resolution number 1078. Does anyone wish to offer a public comment? Don't hear any. Counsel discussion? Anybody?
Counselor Sims, go ahead.
So I noticed it's a one-year contract v. the two.
Yes, you did ask staff to ask for a longer term, and they did not agree to that.
So we have to get it together and look at more like a five- and 10-year...
And that was the plan all along. This just basically says that we have to get that longer-term contract in place sooner rather than later, and I think that we can, so I'm not overly concerned about that, but they had discussed that and specifically did not agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts, counsel? What does counsel want to do?
Mr. Mayor, with that, if we're on the council decision, I am prepared to make a motion.
I'd still entertain more discussion if counsel has anything to say, any further.
Okay.
But if not, doesn't sound like it. Counselor Patty, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion we approve Resolution number 1078 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution 1078, authorizing agreement with the San Diego Water Control District for water delivery. Is there any further discussion between counsel? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution 1078 as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Gives us what the ARPA fund use options. Gilio?
Thank you, again. So at the last meeting, we actually carried this forward to the regular business meeting. We were originally going to do a work session, and because we did it in the business meeting, we went ahead and continued it forward in the business meeting. We were wanting to get direction from counsel on how to utilize the ARPA funds that we have. It's a little under $1 million. It has to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and spent, done, 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 spent by December 31st, 2026. At the last meeting, you indicated an interest, you, the council, indicated an interest in looking more at some stormwater uses and potentially some park uses. What's in your package is a memo from me that was prepared in consultation with Lance and James to discuss kind of how we could do that. We do think that we could very easily allocate $250,000 of stormwater, towards stormwater that would be able to be used towards the Ida Street project that's already being worked on, as well as, in the budget, council approved some additional expenditure towards street projects that the Public Works Department will be working on as the year progresses, and having $125,000 will allow them to look at streets that may not have been on the table if they couldn't have been done without stormwater funds. And so we think that we could fairly easily, comfortably, say that we could obligate those funds within that timeframe for $250,000 of stormwater. We recommend that the remainder go towards the Ida Street sewer improvement projects. We did discuss the Mill Creek Park potential development, and in your packet, we've got a memo that kind of explains the reasons why we don't think that's the best use of these funds, but ultimately it's up to counsel on how you choose to allocate that funding. But we are hoping to get some direction sooner rather than later, so that James can bring forward a supplemental budget and get moving on actually getting those funds obligated and spent.
Okay, thank you, Gilio. This is an opportunity once again for public comment. If anyone has any ideas about how the best use of the ARPA funds could be used, please let us know. Doesn't sound like it. Counsel, turn it over to you. Counselor Sims?
I know I was originally pushing for money for the Mill Creek Park. I like how you have it set up, the 250 towards stormwater and 671K towards the sewer projects. So I'm okay with it. The only thing I ask, I'd like to, I would like an update when the grant has been submitted for OPRD. I want to know when that went in.
Okay.
Counselor Ort.
Our last meeting, I was asking Lance, and what I wanted to see was if we could use that money towards streets that weren't even, not even just like, you know, one step down, but even farther down. But we had talked about, I did meet with him actually in the street on Third Ave, and we had talked about this area, specifically what he was talking about, and I just got a little bit better understanding of what this money would be allocated for and how we would be able to update the downtown core, and we know where our, you know, economic dollars go, that can be really beneficial to the town, and so I really like this idea, and I'm on board with this. So if you were here last meeting, or you watched the last meeting, like I said, I got a little bit more understanding of the project, and I like where this is going. So I like this first, or this option that you brought to us. Thank you.
It's not an action item, correct?
It's a direction. Right, yeah, you'll be providing direction to us, so that James will then bring forward something for an action item at the next meeting. I did want, I don't know if you wanted to mention...
Go ahead.
Okay, so Counselor Gilio isn't here this evening, and I just wanted to convey for him, he said the main item that I have strong opinion on would be the allocation of the ARPA funds towards stormwater. I would like at least the 250,000 proposed to go towards that, and would like ideally even 50 to $100,000 more, as I reflected on this since the last meeting, that opinion has only strengthened. So that was his input. My only comment to that is that, again, we have to obligate and spend, and we're fairly comfortable that we can obligate and spend this. We haven't discussed whether or not we could do the more with the street dollars that have been budgeted, so.
Counselor McDonald, anything?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for adjusting this towards what I think was the majority consensus among the council on what our priorities were. So this looks like an excellent option for us, and I'm ready to move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ort.
To Counselor Gilio's point, is there, so if, let's say that we did say, hey, let's maybe put another 50,000 towards, because our stormwater is our, you know, smallest fund, and one of the reasons that we can't do a lot with certain streets. So if we said, hey, try to put more towards that, and we get a little farther along, and we, is there like some gray area where we can reallocate it before we hit that deadline of having to, like firmly allocate it?
I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? I'll invite you up, since you're here and you're ready to answer questions.
For the record, James Brand, City Finance Director. I think you're asking if we could reallocate it in the budget, like shift it from storm to sewer, for example, if we are running out of time, or the other way around?
Yeah, so I'm saying, so right here, you're, you know, staff is saying, let's do 250, and we're saying, okay, let's do three, let's shoot for 300, and I know you're saying you're comfortable with that, but if we say, hey, try to use this, do we have some more wiggle room if you come back to us and say, hey, we don't think we're going to be able to spend this in time, and then to shift it back to the Ida Sewer?
Yes, I think there would be time to do that. We could make a budget adjustment easily. Spending it in the wastewater sewer is much easier, and we know it's predictable. It's less predictable on the storm side, so having to obligate it, which basically means you need a contract in place by December of next year, we're confident we could spend it in the sewer, so it's...
And I will also add that by allocating this money, we're already leaving money in the stormwater fund by not taking, for the Ida Street project that we were going to do, we're already leaving money in stormwater and using the ARPA funds, so we're kind of already building that fund up, and then also making sure that we have the other 125,000 towards a project that hadn't been budgeted for stormwater, but there's a street project that we could do. So it is benefiting, I mean, it's benefiting the stormwater fund by leaving money in the stormwater fund and not taking it out of that for the Ida Street project.
Gilio, I think, could you make the distinction again between obligate and spend, just for the community? I think it's important to notate that.
Yeah, and I, shoot, I don't have the very clear piece of paper that I had for me at the last meeting, but basically, the current advisement from the federal government is obligating basically means you have to not just budget it, but you have to, as James said, have contracts in place. You have to like have the money obligated with signing documents versus spent where you maybe have a contractor on board, they've got a contract, they know they will be doing this project. Spending is they've actually done the project and are getting paid for the project.
Okay, yep. Is that a fair assessment, James?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I just wanted to go ahead and say, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I would say, based on the video I viewed, I was pleased with where the direction of the conversation went as far as how this would be allocated. I really want just a firm understanding from staff, as far as the proposal on the table with the 125,000 to the Ida Street project between first and fourth, and the 125,000 towards stormwater for an additional street improvement projects, do we feel that we can obligate, right, by the deadline on all those? That's my main question.
In our discussions with Lance, yes, because we have street projects that we have in the budget, that is, again, if you recall, council allocated additional funds towards a street project, so we know we have street funds to do something within this budget year, and so we'll make sure that we, you know, we're able to do something that also requires the stormwater component, and we're already proceeding with the Ida Street project.
Okay, and so until we hear from Lance as to whether or not we can spend additional funds that we just heard about from Counselor Gilio, and we're kind of hearing a preference for maybe, I want to make sure that Lance knows that we can spend those before we allocate them, or give you direction to allocate them tonight. So that's my own personal viewpoint on that. I mean, I'm assuming, based on kind of what you're saying, that we could, but I just don't want any of this money left out there that we can't spend in time. That's my big thing.
Yeah. So James, I know you wanted to kind of get something from counsel this evening. Can you describe what sort of direction you're needing to bring something forward, or if this is enough direction for you?
To help with the process, it would be a budget allocation, which we're not bringing forward today, but it would be probably the next council meeting, and at that point, we would allocate money to each fund, specific dollars.
So if we talk to Lance, and he says, I'm not comfortable that I can spend any more than this, we will bring forward something that essentially follows this. If he says, yeah, I think I could spend more than this, then am I getting head nods that we maybe want to have more, even more towards stormwater? Like whatever he feels comfortable, I'm not sure. I know I've got it from some of you, but I'm not sure head nods from...
Just to be clear, my first condition on this is I want to understand from Lance that we can spend it, and then we can have the conversation, at least to me, as far as counsel, because I don't see a point in having a conversation about money that we won't wind up being able to spend, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Ort.
Julia, when you first started talking about this, you were saying that Lance did feel comfortable or confident in being able to spend this?
The 250, yes. Definitely. Anything more than that is what I'm not sure of.
Okay. I guess what I'm thinking is, if we say you have 250, and then that's what you have in your mind, you're like, okay, that's what I have to spend, so then he can say, yeah, that's what I... Were you guys looking at a particular dollar amount, or was it just what do you think you can spend when you came up with the 250?
He provided us with the 250 based on what he thought he would need through this fiscal year. So I'm fairly comfortable that that's what he feels comfortable spending. That said, if I said you must spend more, is there something that you feel like you could spend more money on? That I don't know.
I guess I'd just be curious with that, because I know for, I would love to just maybe push that a little bit more and see if he had, if he did have that money, what would he do with it there? Because I feel like this is an opportunity for us to utilize that in a spot where we have gone back and forth even to budget years where I've been wanting to put money into the stormwater fund, and then I keep getting pushed back. So now is it an opportunity for us to put money or keep money in our stormwater fund? Like this is one of those opportunities to be able to do that. So I want to push that as much as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor McDonald?
I guess, Julia, a key detail might be, of the 671,000 dedicated to the Ida Street current project, how much of that are we saving from the stormwater? Because we just said that that's going to reduce the amount of money we've had budgeted from storms, correct? So what is that, what portion of that 671 is money we're not spending out of stormwater?
So the 671 is for the sewer wastewater. So the 250 is for stormwater.
Okay.
So...
I thought you said something about, something about that money being...
Yeah, so the 125 is money that, for the Ida Street project, we would be spending from stormwater, but instead, we would be spending it from ARPA, so that 125 would stay in the stormwater.
Okay.
And then the other of 125 is money that we would be able to use to do a street project that includes stormwater, that we might not have, we might have had to choose a different street project, because we didn't have the funds from stormwater.
Got it. And then I just, my other comment was that just to be, to remind the rest of the council that anything, any more money we take away from that Ida Street project is money we could potentially have, be part of a loan that we'd be paying interest on, that would be more expensive down the road, so just as an additional factor there. So I'm comfortable with what we have on paper here. I hesitate to go any further than that, just because I want to get that Ida sewer project done, and with as little extra overhead as possible. So I'm glad that we listened, and we want to put a little extra money in there, but I don't want to start eroding away that budget also.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty?
Yeah, I think I'm with Counselor McDonald on this. I saw the rest of that, right here, we'll be seeking low-interest and forgivable loans to complete the construction as soon as possible, and I'd like to reduce as many as possible low-interest loans that we have. So that's just me.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
I, I'm pretty comfortable with the allocations of 250 for the stormwater, and I like to see the bulk of it going towards the Ida Street improvements, because of the loan amount, and I think that'll reduce the cost for everybody, but unless Lance comes to us and says there's a dire need for another 50,000 in the stormwater fund, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with the allocation here.
I'd also remind that the original suggestion from staff was to budget all of it for the Ida Street project, so this is already a concession on that somewhat.
That's correct. I think the thing to remember that's important is that all the stormwater upgrades will eventually lead to street improvements, right? So I think that's a component that we often don't think about. We hear fix the streets, fix the streets, and we don't often consider the totality of the package of what it takes to fix the street, so something to keep in mind. Counselor Ort?
I'll just say one last time, that one of the major pushbacks that we get on streets that we can't fix is that we don't have any money in the stormwater, and that's the last I'll say on that.
So I think that we've heard you. We will talk with Lance, and I guess you'll see what is presented before you at the next meeting. It will either be something, you know, an actual budget allocation similar to what is shown here with more explanation on why, you know, that we don't think we could spend more, or it will be additional discussion that, yes, we do think we can, and then bringing forth that conversation for counsel. But I think we've gotten some pretty clear direction.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Good that, James?
Yes, thank you.
That leads us to communication from city staff.
I feel like this is the Julia show tonight. My goodness, and I'm exhausted. Okay, so I have a few things. First, I just wanted to acknowledge Melanie. You met her at the work session, but for the public. Melanie Raba is our new office specialist. She is going to be, did I say that right? Confidential office specialist, which means that she can kind of help us out with some HR things and stuff like that. She'll be the person that will be doing the council minutes and being the liaison. You'll see her and hear from her. I don't know, we often put our new staff on the spot when they're, I don't know if you want to say anything about yourself. I didn't, this is enough on the spot? Okay. We're happy to have her. She's been here four days, a week? A week? I also just wanted to remind the council that there's the community dinner this Wednesday from 3:00 to 8:00 at the Covered Bridge. City Hall will be closed for Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. Of course, police are still there, doing their constant duties. And then, I believe the library and pool are open on Saturdays. Yes, I'm seeing Jana shake her head. And tree lighting, the mayor will be lighting the tree out sort of almost in front of City Hall at 5:15 on...
Friday.
Friday. And then Holiday Fest is in downtown Staton, kind of being kicked off by the tree lighting, but really, the next day is when all of the festivities and the carriage rides hosted by Revitalize Downtown Staton. And then I did want to just note, because of the public comment that was received this evening, I'm still working on the fencing. evening, I'm still working on the fencing estimates. I got some estimates from Lance, and I want to talk to him a little bit more. They're a little higher than I think that they maybe need to be, so I want to explore that a little bit more. So that's the status as I know it. And that is all I have. I just want to remind Counselor Patty, because you told me to remind him of a couple of school board announcements to make, so I'll leave it there.
Thanks.
With that, I'll go for communication from counsel. Counselor Patty?
Yeah, thank you so much. So I had the benefit of attending the North San Diego School District Board meeting on Thursday night. A lot of good information there, if you all have two or three hours to spend on a meeting. Anyways, great stuff, but one thing that the mayor had an idea about, because he came with me, and that was great, they have some student representatives that will present before the school board regularly, and they have helpful information, things that the school board, the student representatives are doing within the high school and things like that. And so we're kind of talking about having these folks come and present to us on a regular basis, and I just wanted to make sure I had buy-in before I spoke for you all on that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I'm excited to see what they have to say.
Yeah, the last thing that they had presented was a festival of trees, and I don't remember the details on it, so you're going to have to look into it a little bit more, hoping that maybe the first meeting that we have them at, they can talk to us about that, whatever's going on there. So, yeah.
You also mentioned that you wanted to be reminded about the newsletter that they have.
Oh, that's right, thank you. They are trying to get a newsletter shared with the community in general, stakeholders. It's got a QR code now that it's accessible by, and so I was just hoping that we could maybe speak amongst staff or council in any way we can support them and collaborate and get that out there, whatever.
Counselor Or.
Counselor Patty, so if you scan the QR code, you get access to the newsletter?
That's right.
Is that maybe something we could put on our newsletter? Maybe?
That's kind of what I envisioned, so good idea.
Yes, I think that we can probably incorporate something where this next newsletter, I think Christian's working on a new layout formatting, it may look a little different. So we can talk to him about adding that. We could probably also share something on social media to spread that word to, especially if they've posted it on their social media. It's an easy, easy share there.
And we did get an email from them as well about just how to share it with our staff and council, and we can certainly, when we get it, forward it via email to council and boards and commissions and staff and things like that.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Christian should expect communication from the school board. I kind of name dropped a little bit, so. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Or.
I wanted to expand upon the holiday festivities happening downtown. So it's Friday and Saturday, businesses will be open, so have your, help your community have a happy Christmas, Merry Christmas by shopping local. But they're going to be, downtown businesses are decorating their windows, and they're having a contest, a window display contest, and that will run through 7:00 PM on Saturday. And there's, the mayor's lighting the tree, there's going to be visits from Santa Friday and Saturday, and free carriage rides on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
With that, I just have a couple of things. I want to thank Richard Lewis and Mr. Bellis for stepping forward as volunteers to fill those much-needed open positions on the boards and committees. Richard, you're like the battery commercial, you just never quit. So thank you very much for that. And Mr. Bellis as well, thank you for stepping forward in that role. It's very, that's a very important role, all the roles that we have where volunteers are a part of the community as essential, so I really appreciate that doing. Having said that, what do we have left? Do we know?
We sure do. There's still, I think, one or two spots on the parks board, and we've got three vacancies on the budget committee.
Okay, so just to give you an opportunity, we just talked about ARPA funding and what the potential uses of that are. That's definitely something that the budget committee would be talking about. So if you have an interest in that, please step forward and throw your name out there. We have until May, but I'd like to get those filled before April. If possible, actually, yeah, earlier the better, correct. So thank you for that. And then, I don't know how to approach this. There's a posting in the social media in town regarding vandalism of the back 40 at the school, at the middle school. If there's one thing that infuriates me in this community is that people come and they give their time and their effort to make this place a better place, to make it a better community where we all thrive and cherish, and step forward and they put their heart and soul into it. In this particular case, it was another Boy Scout project. And what happens is someone comes along and feels entitled to tear it all apart, vandalize it, spray paint it, throw the stuff in the ditch, whatever. I don't understand. What is the rationale behind that? If those folks that did that need something to do, come see us, and we'll put you to work. I don't get it. It has to stop. So please, if anyone knows who did that, please make a little phone call and say, hey, I know who did that. And more so, if you want to be involved in making the place a better, you have all sorts of opportunities to step forward to do it. That's all I'm going to say about that. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we're adjourned.